Bugsy Prime sits down. Reflecting on all the time we spent with Double. Double. Why do you always seem to just run? And this and why you always hang around people who? Like Vinny who literally just want who literally just want something out of you. You know this man want nothing but power, but you sit. You just take whatever is given to you. Sure. The role players and I ain't that perfect. Trust me, I've done more horrible shit than I could ever possibly even know, but still. I've atoned for a lot of it. A lot of it, so much. Either way, it just pisses me off. Bugsy having a silent conversation with himself. As he sits. As he sits near the railing. Goods, goods that'll pop pops out for a minute. Bugsy? Do you have a minute? Oh, oh G, oh G S I have nothing but good, I have nothing but time. That's what being a guy of times like just having nothing but time. But yeah. Are you still worried about double? Worried? Worried by dear, I'm terrified. Absolutely terrified. Is once again, Double listening to the wrong kinds of people. And now he's isolated himself, I can't even get through. Like he's actually understood chaos or technology to the point where I can't even bust through. I mean, I should be, you know, I don't know whether I should be proud. Or just angry. Bugsy looks down. But dear, what do you got to say? Just. This in my own head right now. Well, I mean if. G S talks slowly. And softly, well, I just feel like maybe. If you shouldn't blame yourself for this. It's Vinny's fault that she, it's Vinny's fault. Vinny wants to say all this dumb shit because of stupid little belt, that's on him. Double just has to realize that you guys. Try your best to help Stella in, if not. And if not, I just say that you, you know, you and the other role players should just do what you do. Because what are you, because? Tell me. Tell me love, what are you gonna? You, I mean, should you really? I mean, should we really be saying that out loud? No, no, not that, but that is, that is one of your talents. You bet it is, but yeah. Helping. Sometimes, sometimes beating the shit out of someone while playing Pokemon pinball with somebody. Well, I wasn't really talking about that, but. You're good at helping, you know, lifting up spirits. That's what you do. You're not some. Gary Stu that always has a plan because sometimes you don't and sometimes you fail. But it's the point of that failure that still keeps you go. It's the point that you fail, but you still get up. You still try. And that's the beauty of you. Really? No, says it. Why is it? That you know exactly what to say? To get me just where I need to be. Because I know you. I didn't know you particularly long, but. I know how you are, I know I'm bad. I know how you treat others. Sometimes you stumble with that, but you still keep trying. So. What are you gonna do now? Well, Nod is still here, so I still gotta do, I still gotta take care of them. So I could, so I can at least have a little fun and do a little, do a little collateral damage. To their shit. How about the brotherhood a little bit? That's what I'm gonna go do. I don't know what I'm gonna do about you know who in the cell. She heard the double left and she's just gone ape shit, so. How was your talk with her by the way? Stupid and pointless and a waste of my time. Just the usual when I'm dealing with her. But when I said, but when I told her what she said in her head, she just shut completely up. Do you really believe that she missed you? She might have, but again. Your subconscious is what you say, what you, what you hide. What you have in your heart. But you don't really say it and people like Senna, they were, people like this, you know. The Senna with that, yeah, the Senna that got locked up. They, people like her don't want to admit that. They think it shows weakness. And maybe. Maybe for her it does. Because it shows she isn't a crazy, crazy person that schemes and plans. But at the end of the day. We do what we can. At the end of the day. It's because of her, I'm a lot more open. A lot more me. Because if it wasn't for her bullshit, I probably wouldn't be the person I am now. The person that you and the rest of my wives love so very dearly. It just sucks that Double once again is away from me and I can't help him or do anything, it's just. Sucks, but hey. Life, life moves on. The trees still grow, the leaves still fall, snow still happens. And summer still happens, spring still happens. Life goes on. I just wish. That Double would have been a little bit more forthcoming and just instead bailing on, on us all. We could all just talk to him and just hope for the best. But hey, if he wants to cut ties, it's on him. I still got Cubal dickhead to go fight anyway. And I won't let him win. I've been like, I've been pu- I've been putting it off because it ain't time yet. And I just, even though I got a time, I make the time. I make the time G S, it's what I do. Call me Calendman because I'm on that, I'm on that time. It's just who I am. Good Senna gives him a hug and a no, and a knowing look. They go, they go and do it. I will. He gets up. He gets up. And walks over to him, walks over to Heinrich's place. Yo. Heinrich. It's me, it's Buzzzy. Oh, oh Bud, oh Bugsy, hi. Are you, you good? Yeah. Last night I was playing Crash kind of like, but you know. Probably back to normal. Well, good, I guess uh Double is gone. Yeah. Eh, well. Can't be helped. Double's always going to listen to. Double's always gonna listen to people like Vinny that just want, that just wanted to use him. Hell, even Sage used, even old Sage used him. But that's the way people are. You can't really change what they, what they do. You can only just be there for the people that wanna, want us to be there. We can only be present for the people that want us to be present. And so on and so on. You know it's gonna be, you know it's really cool. Now you're going to do that, you're gonna do that awesome shit. We're gonna still, and the council, the council's still gonna be a thing? Oh hell yeah, the council's gonna still be a thing. But think about it, we ain't gonna have no demo, we ain't gonna have no Demoman. No idiot saying the Bugsy Council sucks because they just do. We can go back to doing what we were doing before. Because you know what? We got tears. We've seen the horrors of Spurb and we came out of that, we came out of that looking like fucking. May, may a little bit worse for wear, but we came out of that, we came out of that together. As a team. And also. You seen that, you seen that child wedding? Yes, I did, it was cute. I just feel like. I feel like the rest of us. I feel like. I feel like Double just kinda just, you know. He lets despair control him too much. And as much as I would, as much as I would love to. Help him out. I can't help a man who's constantly just. In a battle with himself. So. I guess, I guess we're gonna go back to just doing the usual, making videos and. Me and AF dealing with the Cubal dickhead. And us going out and beating up Nod every now and again. Because I'm always gonna slap Kane around, I guess that's just, you know, that's just my line in life and I'm fine with that. Beating up Kane, it was always the fun part. But I wish Double could actually understand and hear. The things that were most important. Like. This is simple fact of the matter is, he just kinda bailed and believed that, that freaking. Why does he always believe that like every dude is just porking Stella? Yeah, like Zilla, like Zilla just out here just like, ah yes. Every dude, but like, but I gotta be real, every dude has a fear of being cucked at some point. We just don't have that kind of ability anymore because we're just like, we could just smack anybody that gets in our way. And we're just like, you think you have a huge one, we're like, I go zip. Like I just dropped a dead body on, on the floor. Megalo. Heinrich, what the fuck are you saying? I'm just saying, bro. But you know. Um, Over is in the study just kind of um, you know, reading up on some things. Where's uh, where's Jimmy? Oh, Jimmy's out, Jimmy's out back. They're all training, they're all training at your place, but not my place, we wanted to kinda give you a break. The whole Zeno thing kind of set you through a spin and we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna bore you man, when you fell asleep, we just kinda put. Put a covering, you closed the door, we went, we all went home. So it's just, you know, you just done with shit. You know, and I just feel like anything we would have said would have probably either upset you or went to other stuff. Yeah. But it's good to know that you guys actually get, that you guys care. Enough to just stay with me as long, until I fell asleep, until I fell asleep. Because. You're, because you're, you're our cousin. Well, for, for Jimmy, you're more of a, you're, you know, he's your clone, he's your brother. But for me and the others, me, Tario, Over. You know, me, Tario, Over and Dem, we're, you know, we're your cousins. You were like our bro, you're like our brother. And I just want, I just want you to know that despite everything that's going on right now. We'll always have your back. This is who we are. I know. And Over, I can see that, I can hear that you're listening with your spell. How did you, how did you know? I can tell, I'm magically aware like you are. Well, it's a little, it's too bad about Double. I mean, not too bad, just really, really unfortunate. Listen, I mean, listening to any of all the people. After he got that little power trip, we should give him the old, we should give him some sweet chin music. Humble his ass, we just, like, we just just run, we just just. We just figure out how to get through that freaking isolated universe and just start running his pockets, just start beating the shit out of him. Yeah, but beating the shit out of him isn't gonna fix things. Double just has the uh, you know, Double just surrounds himself with all these mob, with all these like. Dudes that say they have his best interests, but they end up using him and then. The rest of the role players and us, we never try to use them, we just try to hang out with them, be cool with them, but it never seems to pan out. It always sees us as the villains. Like, i- it's stupid. How many times has that has happened, like dude? And trust me, I get kinda tired of the Bugsy Council jokes, like seriously, like dude, all the, all the other little minions are like. Not a bunch of councils suck, motherfucker, we used to do more work than y'all do on a daily basis while fucking Master Agent's sitting there. Crying about fucking Naruto. And the rest of you crying about trivial shit while we're actually out there doing the work, Reno is out there doing the work. Ben is out there doing the work. Dem is out there doing the work, we're all down here doing work and y'all motherfuckers are just out here crying over petty shit. And Vinny crying over, ah, he got the championship medal, ooh, I'm like, bro, it don't matter. That's how we yawn, that's how we know y'all, that's how we know. Vinny and the others ain't here, ain't never been heroes once in their lives. I never had anybody that actually relied on them. Not for real. I think the thing about us is, we usually just, we're a group. And we're also a family. So we all know each other, so there's no way we turn on each other for any reason. I mean, we, yeah, we may piss each other off, we may do regular practical jokes. I was about to say regular practical jokes, but the kind of practical jokes. That Senna and like, Tenchi's mom was doing, those weren't jokes, those were fucking felonies. And can we talk about fucking Demoman just constantly having the biggest fucking hard on for all of us? Like holy shit. The Bugsy Council, fuck the Bugsy Council because the Bugsy Council once took my boot. The Bugsy Council once, once again wants to be trying to get all of in the, get all of in our business. No, the Bugsy Council must always suffer for every little thing, just because. Just because we got straight clown, just because they got straight clowned and we can't know how to deal with that. The Bugsy Council will always pay because I am, because I don't see anything. The Bugsy Counts. I'm Master Asia and I'm gonna tear their shit house down and then I come in and I'm like. Oh, you're gonna do what? It's like, no, please, please daddy, no, and I'm like. One, two, three. Bagio number twenty-six. You know, you know, it's kinda fucked up that I have like a thing. Oh, trust me, you, you ain't missing nothing. You really aren't. Yeah, they'd probably just make fun of you for like the fact that, you know. You know, you're with, you're with Candy Jade and Candy Jade got the, Candy Jade got the you know what? We ain't gonna say it, but we all know it, we all know it and we've kind of said this. Literally when we do the homestuck, when we do the homestuck read, you kind of, you kind of get what we're trying to say without actually saying it. You know, it's even funnier. All those times, you know. All those times that freaking Senna just said. Oh, the Bugsy Council. Why don't you guys give up? She wasn't really talking to us, she was talking to you, wasn't she? Every time. I- is she that, was she that bad hurt that you left? Every fucking ti- every fucking time she ever saw me in the prosperity universe, dude. I'm just like. And come on, we know, we know, um, we know. Freaking none of his kids and his wife has been erased, I'm just like, at this point, I'm just like. Double, if you keep falling for this nickel and dime shit, like every time, man, like you fall for it so easily. Man, you know what we should, you know what we should do? Since, since we're all like, just wondering what to do, we're sitting here. Let's just bring, let's just get all the, let's just get all the role players and the role player coalition together, we just have like a fucking party. Yeah, like, yeah, and then have all the freaking uh, you know, have all the broadcasts out so we can just watch that shit. Ah shit, let's go, let, guys, I got an idea, let's go fucking, let's go get everybody together and let's go watch Mystery Science Theater. Don't we still got the war with the angels and shit? Yeah. I'm saying afterwards. You know, I never understand why the mads. Shot Joel into space because it's like, okay, you shot this man into space. But like, you're just torturing him in space. You're not really, he's getting something to eat, he's breathing. You guys are not really trying to kill him, kill him. Just wear him down slowly, it's. I mean, it's evil, but it's not really like evil, evil, because if you really wanted to do that, you could just like chime in the rocket. And just left him with no food and probably then do the cheesy movie thing, but like have him on the brink of insanity. Yeah, that's what you could do. But um, no, they don't do that. And, you know, even TV, even old TV's Frank just ran away, he's like, nah. Not Mr. Forrester, fuck you. Fuck you. Dude, they were. Dude, let's be honest. TV Frank, TV's Frank and uh, Mr. Forrester, you, we all know they were, we all know they were kinda getting down. Oh, straight up. Like, let's not all pretend that that's not what was going on there. They give off that vibe. And there ain't nothing wrong with that vibe and we all know that they, that was going on because, you know, Frank even was like, why here, we love the way they love. I'm like, dude. Why you gotta say it like that, like, 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 are you and Mr. Fu- are you and Doctor Forrester getting down? Is he not like, is he not uh? Is he not spit shining the pipes, you know what I mean? He's not working, he's not working the uh. He's not working the toilet, he's not working the uh, yo, the sewer flow. He's not. He's not jostle, he's not jostling. He's not jostling the pleasure ost- ostulator? Uh, that was a good, oh. Over, that was a fucking good one, man. Yeah. Hey uh, Dem, yeah, I know. Just go back to your regular form, buddy. I don't even know what that is anymore. You know what your regular form is, doofus. It's not that demonic form you have. Yeah, I know. So either way, I'm just. So. Am I, so are we doing something for thirteen or what are we doing? Well, we're doing something, I'm thinking just when you do that, you know, the, the, like the jade thing you were planning and then like. If there's like homestuck read, we'll do that. I just. Did it, did it like last night, like early this morning, just gave us a big old bomb. But like usual guys, we'll come out of this just fine. As per usual. And we'll probably run into something else. Solve the world's problems, solve, solve the world's problems, have a few of our own. Share some grief on a slight trombone and then stop. Shake heads with the reaver, tell him how do you do, I said. I said, well, grandpa, well, how are you? I'm a chaotic loony with this. I'm a chaotic loony with this, literally. With this literary sense of humor, don't wanna. Don't wanna fuck, don't wanna be a doomer, now stop. Tonight we sail on Withersband, I got the game blank out of my head. Can't burn me down or fizzle me out. Gonna beat you with a little sour crown. And it's not. We're, guys, we're stupid. Yeah, we're stupid together. We may be smart, but we're, we're dumb, we're just, we're just kicking shit together. I mean, isn't that what, isn't that what pe- isn't that what? Isn't that what we all just want sometimes? I mean, yeah, we're smart, we're all very smart, we're all very, we excelled stuff, but. I think we're better when we're all just together, you know? Yeah. Wanna go, hey guys. It's um, it's like one, I mean, no, it's two now. You guys wanna go and um, go to Denny's? Fuck yeah, let's go to Denny's. No one's getting that grand slam, which other than you, Megalo. No one's getting that grand slam which other than you, Megalo. You know, guys, fuck you, grand slam which is are good. In what universe? I'm actually with, I'm actually with um, Over on that one. Why you guys are a bunch of dicks? I mean, we could be a bunch of dicks, but I'm just saying, no one likes that other than you. I don't care if they're so popular, they're gross. I mean, label spread all over the sandwich. Dude, I'm a wolf and I'm like, ugh. Well, you guys are dicks, yeah, you know, I'm s- I'm gonna pay for my food. No, you're not gonna do no such thing, I'm gonna pay for it. Really? Tario, Tario, uh, wait, are we flying or we use, or whose car are we taking? Uh, I believe we can take, I think, I think yours. Oh, fuck yeah, let's go in the Bugsy mobile, man. Everybody wants to ride in the Bugsy mobile. You're gonna make us ill, please drive normally. I can't, I can't promise that. I can't promise that. Please promise that, no, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't fucking do it, I won't do it, I would never do it. Ah, God. Just, I got a bunch of ginger, I got a bunch of ginger in the, in the side. On the, on the, in the passenger, so just guys, help yourselves with that, I'm about to go ass fast. You mean as fast, no, ass fast. You know what I mean? I swear to God, I, I wish I didn't know what you meant. Well, too bad, it's in your head now. Let's go, folks. Goodie.